... here this evening. I'm Delegate Gary Howell. I am the House Co-Chair of the Joint Committee on Redistricting, and this is Senator Trump, who is the Senate Co-Chair. I'd like to start this evening by having a moment of silence for the troops that lost today in Afghanistan. And on our call, Senator Weld will lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I said, I'm Delegate Gary Howell, and I represent 56th District in Mineral County. Now, I'll now call out the members of the Committee for the House. We have Delegate Statler, who represents Mullen County; Delegate Roerbach from here in Cavill; Delegate Anderson from Wood County; Delegate Linville from here in Cavill; and Delegate Hornbuckle from here in Cavill. And then here also from the House, but not on the Committee, we have Delegate Booth from Wayne County; Delegate Lovejoy from Cavill; Speaker of the House, Mr. Speaker, who's from Clay County, Roger Henshaw; Delegate Burrell from here in Cavill; Delegate Mann from here in Cavill. And I'd also like to recognize former delegates Jim Morgan and Delegate Thompson. And I'll turn it over to our Head Chair, so he can...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Charles Trump from Morgan County, and I have colleagues from the West Virginia Senate who are here tonight. I'll introduce them. Senator Weld again, Ryan Weld from the 1st District, led us in the pledge a moment ago. Serving on the Committee is Senator Mike Caputo from Marion County. There's Mike in the front row of the jury box. Senator Glenn Jeffries from Putnam County; and Senator Eric Tar from Putnam County also. And then our two host senators, who are strangers to no one in this room, I'm sure, in the jury box there in the back row. A host senator who represents Cavill County and Wayne, Senator Plonel. And Senator Plonel, I'll invite you if you want to say a word or two. All right? And to my immediate right, the junior senator from the 5th District, and the senator in the Legislature who is a resident of Cavill County, representing the 5th District, Cavill and Wayne, Senator Mike Wolfman. And Mike, I'll let you, since you're our host senator, if you want to give us a little welcome.
I won't need a... Thank you, Charles. I won't need a microphone. This is the courtroom where I really learned how to be an adult. I've learned a lot about fairness and justice, and this is what this Committee is about and will be about. And this will be done the right way, and it'll be fair. I'll just ask you... Thank you for being here. I'll ask you tonight, when you lay down, to say more than one prayer for all those folks that are overseas, whether they're in Afghanistan or on their way out, or have gotten out, and their families. Thank you.
Senator Wolfman, thank you. And I don't think I missed any senators. Did I get all the senators who are here? Okay. And I'll turn it back over to Chairman Howell, and he'll go over the procedures that we've been employing in these public hearings.
Thank you, sir. Tonight's hearing, we've covered a little bit of the rules on here. We were holding these hearings across the state, and they're to hear your views and opinions on what you would like to see during the redistricting. We want you to... We definitely want to hear your comments. We'll be applying House Rule 84, which is used to govern public hearings in the House of Delegates during legislative session. Pursuant to House Rule 84, members are not permitted to respond to questions during a public hearing. As you may know, the U.S. Census Bureau just recently delivered us the data for the redistricting. Normally, we would have it in April, but because of COVID, everything was delayed, and we just got the data, I believe, what, last week, I think it was? And they're still trying to get it to where it works correctly in the computers, so that we can pull it up and do the redistricting. So we will not be presenting any proposed maps. The maps that you see over here to my right are the existing maps across the state and in this area. Again, it's important that we hold... That we're holding these public hearings to hear from you, so that we know what your wishes are as we do the redistricting. And each person will be given five minutes to speak. You've signed up, and I have a list up here. And so we're going to do it right here. So when your name is called, if you please come up here, and when your five minutes are up, your red light will come on, and if you would try and complete your thoughts, we appreciate that. First up, we have Bill Viset.
First, thanks to the Committee, and welcome to Huntington. I'm glad to see you all here. My name is Bill Viset. I run the Huntington Regional Chamber of Commerce and Association of 550 Businesses that operate in Cavill and Wayne Counties. I'd like to talk to you tonight about congressional redistricting, which is something that my chamber has a firm position on, and in many ways, that position is shared with Charleston Area Alliance, our counterparts to the East. We believe two main reasons why Huntington and Charleston should be in the same congressional district, and Southern West Virginia is interlinked with us as population centers. And that's what I'd like to talk about tonight. Charleston, Huntington, for those of us who are natives of Huntington like me, know that there's a sordid history there. There are times where we've gotten along and times where we haven't, over our cities' histories. And there's multiple reasons for that, some reasonable and some perhaps not so reasonable. But at the end of the day, those of us who, I think, are trying to do economic development, trying to build a better life, or those of us who call this home, those cities are locked together, and our fates are locked together. Yes, we've lost population. Yes, we have challenges and similar challenges. We also have similar opportunities. And I think separating us by two congressional districts like we are now is just another wedge between those two cities. If we can be in the same congressional district, I think that line of communication continues, and we have that advocate, that person we elect, to send to Washington to make sure that our message is heard, that we are working together, that we have this shared destiny. And it works. We're communicating now more than I think we ever have. And it's not necessarily a formalized connection. It doesn't have to be an MSA or something like that. It can be something where we are simply working together. And in some ways, for those of you from your node, that is somewhat historic sadly, but it's happened, and it needs to continue to happen, and I don't want to see a congressional redistricting harm that important economic and cultural relationship. In a similar way, I think our connection to Southern West Virginia in Huntington is often sometimes forgotten by those of us who live here. My work in the coal industry really highlighted how connected Southern West Virginia is with Charleston and Huntington. You live here, you may see a coal barge, but you don't really think of yourself in the coalfields, but you absolutely are economically. Our connection with Southern West Virginia is in many, many ways. If you're from Southern West Virginia, you're in trouble. If you have a substance abuse problem, if you have a medical problem, you come to Huntington and Charleston for help. Our post-secondary education is another reason why you come here. We are those population centers, and that connection with Southern West Virginia is very important to us, again, not only economically, but historically and culturally. I worry greatly about Southern West Virginia. I did a lot of work down there. I have great many friends, especially from my time at Marshall from Southern West Virginia. And if you've been to Gilbert, if you've been to Genoa, or to other places, in a lot of cases, those are places that need hope, they need opportunity. And our cities can be great. If you get dinner here tonight and go to Pullman Plaza, everything's great. We've got to get that greatness to go south. We've got to build the economies down there, not just because it's the morally right thing to do, but it's also an economic imperative, because at the end of the day, if the economy is not good there, we will all be paying for it. And I don't want to sound hurtful about that, but that's what really concerns me, is opportunity. That opportunity can't just be in the population centers. We've got to share that with Southern West Virginia, and have that advocate in D.C. who has that connection to Southern West Virginia, and that understanding of Southern West Virginia, I think, is very important. I'm so glad you're in Huntington. I hope you go out and spend lots of money in our town tonight. Enjoy yourself. But again, this is a serious question. I appreciate being able to share my opinions, as well as those of my chamber. Wish you luck in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Pepper Pena.
First of all, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your time, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to voice our opinions on something that's going to impact us for the next 10 years. The reason... What I'd like to highlight is the Pritchard area, and specifically, Southern Wayne County. We have areas of economic development that have just been neglected. I can remind you of the Pritchard Intermodal Facility and the Hotland Corridor, our two specific projects that we see tumbling, literally going down the highway. These are areas that we can see jobs, it's areas that we can see income to come into our county. We also have areas of tourism and pockets of areas that need to be developed. The only way that I see that this is going to happen is if we give specific representation to Southern Wayne County as a delegate district apart from Northern Wayne County. I would ask that that district line be drawn south of State Route 75 to take Cerito, Canova, and that area, put it together with West Moreland and north, but to draw the line south of 75 and to give the southern part of the county, Pritchard, Wayne, Lavalet, Genoa, Dunlow, give it an opportunity to have its own representative and a single delegate, will spotlight that area and give it a fighting chance to have a shot in the arm, potentially, for representation in Charleston. Otherwise, we're going to continue to see these projects just fall by the wayside. So that's my request. Thank you all again.
Next, we have Lenny Sundahl.
I'll be brief. Yes, I live in Huntington, near about the South Side, Fairfield border, I guess, in terms of neighborhoods. And I just... My chief concerns are, A, especially us, this area being, right now, a few multi-member districts, you know, about to get, for lack of a better term, blown up, and withdrawn into now 100 single-member districts. I simply ask that the great care be taken in making sure that communities of interest are being taken into consideration when drawing the districts. I don't know to what extent that partisanship may... That partisan data may be factoring into this, but I would please, please, please make it to a fair amount. But like I said, I'm keeping my remarks short. I want to do more listening than anything else, so enjoy your stay.
Thank you.
Well, just one last thing. I'm going to echo Mr. Viset's remarks regarding congressional districts. I do believe that they're the East. I do believe that Charleston... The Charleston-Huntington corridor should be in its own district. Now...
Next up, Thornton Cooper.
It's good to be in Huntington. I'm Thornton Cooper. I'm an attorney. I live in South Charleston. I've been involved in redistricting recommendations after the '80 census, the '90 census, the 2000 census, the 2010 census, and now we're here again, the 5th census. I've been involved in this. I was also a party in all the challenges to the... I mean, to the challenges to the congressional redistricting done by the Legislature 10 years ago, to the State Senate redistricting done by the Legislature 10 years ago, and to the House of Delegates redistricting done 10 years ago. And I've been pushing for single-member districts for almost 40 years. As I did... And I submitted 100 single-member district plan 10 years ago. With respect to Wayne County, I put Pritchard, Fort Gay, Lavalet, and Wayne, or at least parts thereof, into the same single-member districts. I certainly believe we should put communities' interests together. With respect to the other senators, of the other speakers, I want to point out, as the people know, went to the willing hearing, I've already submitted a congressional redistricting plan that would do what they've been requesting. My feeling is that the world does not center on Charleston or Huntington, but basically, we need to figure out how the state is shaped. And from my perspective, it's not a north versus south, or east versus west, it's more southwest to northeast, southwest along the Tug Fork of the Big Sandy River, all the way over to the Potomac, not far from where Senator Trump lives. That, to me, that's the greatest distance. And a lot of times, people in the eastern part of the state aren't taken, you know, are forgotten. But when I... So I'm trying to come up with compact districts. And so before we got the census figures on the 12th of August, I spoke at the meeting in Logan, and I also spoke at the meeting in Winfield. And I suggested to the members of the Committee, I said, "Here's what I think you ought to do. Get out a compass and find the million people who live closest to the point where Pennsylvania, Maryland, and West Virginia meet, which is near Hazleton, Preston County, and get a compass and find the million people that are closest to the point where Virginia, West Virginia, and Kentucky meet." And that's near the community of Warrens with in Mingo County. And then when you get those, and you put the counties, and if counties are both missed, it's kind of a gray area. You can put it either congressional district. But if it's just a one list, that's presumptively, it'll be in congressional district one or two. So I did that. And then when I got the results of the 12th of August, I started working on it, and the next day, I came up with a plan based on the work that I'd already done. So I'd already come up with about 15 or 16 counties that would be in this congressional district. And so the next question was what to attach to it. So I already had Mason, Putnam, Canal, Fayette, Summers, and Maroon. So I said, "Well, the only county in the state that is not included, that goes through I-64, goes through, that's not on there, is Greenbar County." And I don't think that's too far from the people in the northern manhandle to drive down to, so I said, "Put that in congressional district two." And then I said... Then I looked at I-77. I said, "The only two counties in the state, in the district I've drafted so far, that are not on I-77 are Jackson and Parkersburg." So I had them. So at that point, I was looking at over 16,000 shy of exactly half of the state's population. So then I went to the small counties in the kind of the central part of the state and found what was the best match to come up with numerical... Close to numerical perfection. So it turned out those two counties were Webster and Ridge. So I attached those two, and this is the plan that I came up with, which I've already submitted to the Committee. But under congressional district one, it would be 896, 882. Congressional district two, 896, 834. So each one 24 away from numerical perfection. That is important in federal court cases. If the Legislature were to adopt my plan, then it'd be very difficult for anyone to challenge it, unless you can find somebody else that even will come up with a closer plan than mine. Mine is compact, even though the two counties, the last two counties I added kind of go out at a right angle to the counties they're attached to. It is compact, and it's equal in population, and puts together communities of interest. And this thing about Charleston, Huntington, we've been debating it for years. I ran for the State Senate in 2006 against Brooks McCade. We both agree. Not... Don't forget Putnam County. You know, Putnam County is right between us, and all three of those counties should be thought of as a unit. The only difference between Senator McCade, he wanted to make them all one big county, and I said, "I think it goes a little too far." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Jim Morgan.
What a distinguished-looking group we have sitting up here, if I may say so. It's a pleasure to have you in Cavill County. I am President of the Cavill County Commission, which for this term. And I really have, as you will find out, no plan for you. What I would like to suggest that you do is to expedite what you all have to do, so that our county clerk who is sitting back there has appropriate time to draw the precincts that they need to draw to keep us ready for elections. I think that, as you all know, the districts ought to be concise, compact, equal, taking into account the population and where the incumbents live. There's bound to be some desire to various points, possibly two incumbents head-to-head in a challenge. You all know that there is certain strengths in the incumbency, including knowledge of what goes on in Charleston. And you all have that knowledge. I would also hope, and I looked to see if I could pick out anyone in particular, the term gerrymandering, and the only thing that came close was garymandering, so I hope that Mr. Powell does not garymander, since he and the Senator are both from way over there. Remember that we are the western part of West Virginia. We appreciate you all being here, and I would remind those of you who are longer-term that if in 2014 you would have added one cent to the sales tax, you would now have $1.6 billion to do something with. We hope that you have equally brilliant ideas as that. Thanks a lot to you.
Thank you. I can surely be no garymander anymore, Jerry. Next up, we have Nioka Baker-Chaplin.
That's me.
Did I get that right?
Nioka.
Nioka, sorry.
First of all, thank you so very much for being here and hearing our voices. The League of Women Voters of the Huntington area come from a pointed need to be here today to make a statement, and I'm on the Board of Directors there. And it's very exciting for many reasons. Today, August 26th, is also the anniversary of the ratification of the women's right to vote, which is very important to us, and we appreciate everyone who is here to listen to what we have to say today about redistricting. And it's very important to the League of Women Voters, Fair Maps. We have a Fair Maps Committee. We've done a lot of work, and I want to put out a special thanks to Senator Charles Trump, who participated in our League of Women Voters redistricting teach-in on June 17th. He was one of the folks that responded to us in any event. So... But in order for the one person, one vote, to truly work, we must see an end to all types of gerrymandering. The current West Virginia districts are somewhat chaotic. You know this, you've seen it. If you want to have beautiful maps, you just need to follow the West Virginia Constitution, and you know what that is. And so if you're... Use Article 1, Section 4, and then go to Article 6, Sector 8, Section 4, and you are going to have maps where you see the county lines, you have contiguous perimeters, communities are kept whole in compact districts. What's the benefit of compact district? Communication. You know who your representatives are. You're able to take those issues directly to them. There's no confusion. If you look at District 16, part of District 16 is all the way down in Lincoln County, with part of Huntington all the way up here. With... Let's look at something else. With 1,784,787 people living in our state, that leaves us about... And if you're dividing into 100 districts, that's going to leave us around 17,847 voters per delegate district. That's 5.17 districts, delegate districts in Cavill County alone. Can we see those state in Cavill County? When lines must be adjusted to accommodate districts, there should be consideration of the areas of commonality and mutual interests that are shared between those two counties. What's drawing... Why would you absolutely... Why would you bring two counties together in a district if they share nothing in common? Now, some exceptions to that. Maybe they live in proximity to a polluting industry. Do they share the same water source? Do they share the same public service districts? When you think about community of interest, we're looking at school districts. No one in their right mind would want to be dividing a school district into two different districts. And even when you think about it, cities, communities, municipalities are incorporated districts. When you think about that, what is the value of... How can you divide a person? These incorporated entities have been given guaranteed kind of a unique personhood. So with regard to redistricting, you guys can do it. You have the ability to set an example to every state in the Union that fair maps are possible. Of course, we would love to see the maps before they're ever attached to a bill. That, if we could zoom in in a Google view, we could give you an analysis, we could make an assessment, we could give you an authentic opinion or view of what's happening. We don't want to go into the future and see the litigation, you know, 10 years ago, that litigation, or complaints to the Ethics Commission. You guys can do this. And if you look at it locally, local solutions are going to be state solutions. And we really appreciate you. I guess this means I should just... But thank you so much. I'm really grateful to speak today.
Robert Thompson.
Thank you all very much for being here. It's good to see some of you again. I'll speak on behalf of the people of Wayne County. And to echo the sentiments earlier, I agree 100% that Wayne County, from one end to the other, in the northern part of the county, you are certainly more orientated toward the Huntington area. In many cases, it's almost... It is a suburb of the Huntington area. As the farther south you go, you quickly realize you are in the coalfields. And in many cases, you're, you know, you're more orientated toward Lincoln County, or Logan County, or Mingo County. So I agree completely that in order to keep communities of interest together in Wayne County specifically, there should be a northern district as much as possible, and a southern district as much as possible. And I understand that that's, you know, it's not... It can't be perfect. I understand that completely. But in order to keep like-minded communities that have similar economic bases, similar cultural backgrounds, in my opinion, there should be a northern district that is anchored toward the Huntington area, and a more southerly district. So those areas have very different problems than in the northern part of the county. So I would ask that you take that into consideration and try to unify the northern part and unify the southern part into two separate districts. And also echo the sentiments of Commissioner Morgan, that please try to get this to us as soon as possible because we, we're concerned about our upcoming election coming in January and we want to make sure we have everything in order and make sure it's right so we don't have any problems when filing starts in January. So again, thank you all very much for being here. I certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you. Kenneth Evans.
Welcome, legislature and this redistricting committee to Huntington and Wayne County and Cavill County. We appreciate you all being here and taking this seriously. Wayne County, you know, we are the western gate to the mountain state. But when we let the folks in the gate down there, not a lot of them stay permanently in Wayne County very long. So we need to change that. We want, we want folks to come to Wayne County to stay and to live. I, I agree with my colleague there, Robert Thompson, with everything that he said. Also agree with Commissioner Morgan, you know, about expediting this so that our county clerks can put on their, the election, the next upcoming election. We've had a loss of population as the state has in Wayne County, and that's a lot of factors. But I appreciate that these folks have recognized that Southern Wayne County has such potential. If we ever get the I-74, I-73, 74 connector, you know, that will be a life-changing event for Wayne County, for Southern West Virginia. So that is one of the big things, you know, that we still need, need to develop. The main part that I think is the problem in Wayne County with representation, and I don't mean to tell you all how to do your job, but four delegates in the districts is, I think, okay. I don't think that's too bad of a deal. The problem is, is we have six senatorial districts. We have six senators representing a fragmented parts of Wayne County. The reality of that is, our people are not represented. They, many of them don't know who their senator is. You know, we've recently only had one senator who is on board with participating on the intermodal and trying to get it revitalized again. We're working, working toward that. So six senatorial districts that are fragmented, the reality of people not being able to determine who is elected or who is not elected. And ultimately, they don't really determine who runs for the seat, who doesn't. Because realistically, if you've only got 1,000 votes in your part of the county and this fellow's district is, you know, 18,000 votes in another county, it just, it doesn't help us. So I hope you all take that into consideration. And we appreciate the work that you do and come and visit us in Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last person we've had signed up to speak, but many times after several people speak, somebody thinks they want to speak. So I'll give you the opportunity. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
My name is TNC. I'm the Cavill County Republican Chairwoman, and thank you all for being here. And don't hold that against me. But I'm here in that capacity and yet I'm not here in that capacity. Obviously, being a county chair, you hear a lot of concerns from people. So I'm just going to be a messenger and let you guys know what I hear from people in Cavill County that are concerned. And I do agree, Phyllis needs her information because that helps me too. And I know I have candidates chomping at the bit, so expediting this is going to be wonderful. And I agree with the Wayne County folks, that needs to be there. Okay, I'm getting on Wayne County and then go back to Cavill. What I'm hearing the most is, you know, Cavill County, I know our state has lost population, but Cavill County fortunately has lost not as much as some of our surrounding counties. And so the concern that my people seem to have, number one is the gerrymandering, bring that up again, I don't want to see any of that. But it's that because we do have a larger population than some of our surrounding counties, they're concerned about losing their representation. We love it that there's going to be single-member districts, but a lot of people are concerned that we're going to lose that representation that we have. Now I do agree that counties, districts ought to be matched up better sometimes with, you know, their communities, that they do have the things in common, like was spoken earlier. But that's just a concern that I want to let you guys know, and I can put some more things in writing, I don't want to take up time since all your speakers have already spoken, but that does seem to be what people are concerned about. They're afraid they're going to lose their delegate, you know, or lose people. So that's the concern that I want to convey to you. And so if there's anything you could do to save our delegates, Cavill County would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not, if you do have anything that you think of, you would like to submit to us, including maps or anything you come up with, if you pick one of these up, you can send those to us at the redistricting committee and they will become part of the public record. Thank you all for coming.